You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 12, 2022 meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information on this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
To recite the pledge, we call the scene to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I hope that I was trying to sign.
I don't know if you're aware of that Rusty on the Michigan?
Yes, yes.
He passed away.
Yes, we have heard on Sunday.
Because he was a representative of the tribe of Rene Bush. Do a moment of silence.
All right, thank you very much for reminding us about it. So, all right, just so the rest of you understand it as well, Rusty Russell Bush was a longtime resident in the village of Michiana, Michigan, and he has been the beach commissioner there and I believe the police commissioner as well for a number of years. So, we heard the sad news, I believe it was on Sunday, that he passed away. He collapsed Sunday morning and passed away early afternoon on Sunday. So, let's, you know, have a moment of silence to remember Rusty for all the stuff that he's done for us here. Thank you. Okay, going on to the meeting, I would like to ask everyone who has come into the meeting to please sign in on the attendance sheet here. Gentlemen? All right, so anybody who has locked in, even if you're like, please sign in, we've got a sign-in sheet, so please sign in on that sheet. And you can, actually, you can take that around the room and then we'll put it back up on the, on the counter, so that we can get our meeting started. Okay? Joan is not here with us today. She called me just a few minutes ago, so she wasn't able to be at our meeting, so I will proceed to call the roll for the meeting. Okay, here we go. President Dina Dombrous, present. Vice President Michael Martinez.
Present.
Ralph Fox.
Present.
Rich Young.
Here.
Clerk Treacher is not here. Fire Chief Gary Bendix, absent. Police Chief, Marcus Bostick, I believe, is here. Okay, Department Board President Dolly Millick.
Here.
Okay, thank you. BCA President Matt Bowen, absent. Building Commissioner, Code Enforcement Officer Deb Chubb.
Here.
Okay. Flight Plan Administrator Ray Dombrous is absent. Advisory Plan Commission President Ralph Fox.
Okay.
Website Samantha Arnold, absent. Row Commissioner Bob Skalkowski.
Here.
Ralph, did I call you for commission?
Yeah.
I mean for council? Okay, good. All right. Thank you. Just making note of these. Okay. Everyone received the latest town agenda this, earlier this afternoon. They made a couple of changes on it. I think you should have received it, highlighted in blue, like a pink or something. And so, do you have any additions or corrections, I mean, to do for the agenda?
The title under communication to receive. MS4. Could have dollars on it.
Oh, that's right. MS4, it should be MS4, thank you. But for the topics, anybody have any?
I don't see anything.
Okay, very good, thank you. Again, if someone new just walked in, please make sure you've signed in on the attendance sheet. Okay, minutes from the last meeting, which is the June 14, 2022 meeting. Have the council members had time to review, read and review?
Yes, and I had sent some comments back to Joan earlier, and she helped me clarify some of the information. I had to unfortunately go back and listen to what John Doyle said last night, but the meeting was all in there, so that was okay. But I did have an issue with the work under unfinished business. We didn't agree to do a workshop.
Correct. Yeah. All right. So, that one was at the very end, unfinished business, or close to the end, correct? Unfinished business, words in it. Oh, yes, I see it up at the top. So, that section needs to be removed. I, as well, commented to Joan and sent back a highlighted copy. I thought I sent it out to everyone, but.
Yeah, I did see.
You did see that. So, those two sections should be removed from those minutes because those were not included. They need a workshop with John Doyle was never discussed, as well as that sentence, that longer paragraph that had to do with, where you said, "Most of the streets."
Yes.
From that is, that's right, from the sentence, "That is," we were attempting to do all the way to the end under included in the grant. You know, all of this was.
That's all I have.
Yes, okay. Any other comments and questions? Nothing? How about you, Rich? Did you have any other comments?
Well, I got this, hey, Joan?
Mm-hmm.
Under reports from committees?
Yes.
I don't know. This has already been corrected. The last, June 14, 2022, it had Ralph Fox made the motion and then his second.
Oh, okay.
I don't know who did, but I don't think Ralph did both.
Yeah.
No, I don't think Ralph did both. I did have, I probably had it somewhere else. I was writing some of those down. Okay, we'll check that out. Thank you for that comment. I didn't catch that before. Okay, thank you.
One more.
All right, okay.
Couple of them. On that same second page, under department reports.
Yes, yes.
It said that I checked with a Velcro, Velcro is a bike shop.
Okay, so I'm gonna change that.
Deal.
Bike stuff, right? Okay. Okay, so there's a change, okay?
I think that other say, say, I want.
Okay, well, then if there are any other titles or something you saw, then we will have to put those out to Joan. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes with the corrections that have been noted here today?
I don't have that motion.
Okay. Ralph Fox?
I'll send it.
Okay. Mike, okay, Ralph Fox moved to accept minutes with the corrections that were noted here today. Michael Martinez, seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay, the four ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Okay, we move on into a section that we're calling short-term rental permit applications slash public comments at this time, too. We have two applications coming before us. Now, Michael, you said you were going to make a couple of comments as we start?
Yeah. Thank you for, I don't know who's all here to speak regarding the letters, which I'll open up for in a few minutes, but first and foremost, thank you. I think in the two and a half, three years that we've been on this board, this is the most feedback we've got from residents, so we appreciate that. I want to, as again, we're gonna hear kind of everyone summarize what they've already sent to us. In reading around seven or eight correspondence from each of you, some of the things that really stuck out to me regarding, this was specifically 415 Pine Wood, was the concern about the large house, which would then incorporate possibly large parties, noise, late-night noise, possible loud talking and music, okay? So, with that, some of the things that I wanted to make sure that I stress to you as well, being residents of Michiana Shores, is that a lot of our STR information is readily available upon our website. So, it's the same information that all of us review, kind of check the balance on RF, everything is recorded, everything is submitted on time and correctly. So, to summarize all of those concerns, which again, you'll have a few minutes to speak to that, about the noise and specifically the parties. Some of this information, this application that each homeowner has signed and submitted, I pull out these two items, items seven and item seventeen, okay? I'm just gonna read them verbatim in which each homeowner has signed, initialled, and submitted. No parties or events at a property involving more people than allowed by the noted maximum occupancy. One of the requirements is that when you are and have been approved as an STR is that you have a permit on the window affixed to that window stating how many people are allowed based on the home inspection, okay? If there are more than that, they are in violation, okay? The other, so that addresses the large parties, the possible large gatherings. The item seventeen, quiet hours commence at 10:00 PM Central Time, Sunday through Thursday, 12:00 AM Central Time, Friday through Saturday. This is again, is within ordinance. One of the backgrounds that we've done in kind of researching, again, thank you for all the feedback, is we've now shared this recently with our Long Beach Police, so they are in now, in custody, not custody, they are possession of this document as well. So, anytime any of these, which again, I just called up, too, are in violation, we will either contact Deb or Code Enforcement Officer, or if it's a noise violation or anything like that, contact the police, not emergency number outside, but emergency. So, I just wanted to kind of give you a level set with everyone, is that the more information you have, the better you are to arm yourself in case something does go awry. We hope for the best with everybody in the STRs, you know, it's not our intention to block everybody, but what I will say to you is that legally, from the state of Indiana, we cannot deny an STR. It has nothing to do with us and being a local government approving it. It is in the state of Indiana. We are looking, now that we have signed with a firm, a termy firm, we are looking in the infancy stage of looking at limiting STRs in the future. That's it. Just as far as, as much as I know, so that is something that we are looking at, to see if it's even possible. But I want you to know is that as you speak, you're not just out following on Deb here, is that we truly do care about your concerns because everyone's concern is that, right? And it only takes a few to kind of root for everyone else. So, with that, I didn't know if anyone else had any comments before we kind of opened it up to discuss this.
I will add just one comment to make it clear. I encountered a lot of people, I get a lot of phone calls, I get a lot of emails or texts within prayers from residents here in town who have concerns about this. And one of the things that I have to educate them about every single time is that the state of Indiana passed in July of 2018, a law that says, if the community, the municipality, the county, whatever it may be, did not have a law on their ordinances or on their books in essence prohibiting or limiting at that time of any kind of short-term rentals, then we are very limited as to what we can do, and we cannot prohibit short-term rentals. Does not say we may not be able to limit numbers, locations, and so forth. Does not mean that we can keep permits going forever. Permits can be revoked. Permits can be, you know, perhaps not issued a second time because of violations and things like this. So, we do have, you know, the opportunity to do some of these things, but just so that you all understand, we cannot outright say absolutely no to short-term rentals. When you hear of other towns doing this, it is because they already had a law. Previous councils of our town did not believe that this was a serious issue at the time it came up. This was, mind you, in the years, probably 2016, 17, where legislatively they were working, but they voted on it. The Indiana State Legislature voted on it in July of 2018 to permit short-term rentals. So, anyway, that's just FYI, so you all know where we stand, okay? All right, so now, the first permit is at 415 Pine Wood. Have you a chance, gentlemen, to take a look at that permit application?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, were there any questions, discrepancies, and so forth on it?
Um, I didn't see, I think you had, you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Seeland.
Seeland.
I didn't see on here unless we missed it. What was the occupancy number?
Head.
And that was in here?
Yeah, it was on the, on the application.
Where on the application are we?
Is that the same?
Yeah, I mean, I assigned paperwork to it here to the local maximum occupancy with, you know, the two, two people per bedroom and two additional people per toilet, and it's a three-bedroom through that phone, pull that, so ten would be that number.
Okay, we need that number seen somewhere.
Yeah, I, you said it was on the, this application?
I, I believe so. I submitted two, one to Joan, and then I submitted, this is the second one I submitted, but Seeland, I guess, maybe it lost, so.
Okay, Deb, excuse me, Deb, where's Deb? Deb, do you have a copy that actually lists the number ten, notes the number ten, occupancy, maximum occupancy?
No, so the BCA generally, when they review, they look at the inspection, the home inspection to determine how many bedrooms and how many toilets, and then they put it on their approval.
Okay. I'm just looking to see at this note, middle space is here.
One of the questions that I had is, I didn't have a chance to see the variance approval for the BCA, so I, if you saw it on there, I mean, can you verify that?
I did not see that myself. That's just their general practice, but they do, they do have the home inspection, and that shows number of bedrooms and bathrooms, and that's what the BCA do, I was on.
Yeah, so the, the whole thing is clear, it's, I'm just looking for this, that the inspection is supposed to renew the. The purpose of inspection report and inspection certificate issued to the owner and company manager is to verify what's on it to say and how they will for occupancy with respect to heat, electrical systems, plumbing systems, water and sanitary systems, including hot water and even ventilation systems, bathroom, toilet facilities, doors, windows, stairways, halls, functions, smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, land hazards, indoor air quality, public exits, and set total occupancy. Now, we know what, how that's generated, Deb, but it, that's not an inspection, specifically speaking about the number of occupancy. But again, that's a, that's something that's easy to categorize, so we'll probably have to talk about that again. When I, I had an inspection report this afternoon, and I took the whole thing, the whole thing. I noticed that there was only one smoke detector listed in the report, and it was not tested as part of the, it was recommended to be tested, which I found a little bloody for inspectors suggesting to test it for itself. That's what you're paying them to do. That, that's a concern, that's why there's a, 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 a,
The other question, just clarification. I saw your drawings that you had submitted that there was kind of a legend. It says, "Smoke indicated parking spots." I wanted to confirm that there were four parking spots.
There's actually room for five. There's two in the garage and then a driveway with all three. And I drew four in the picture. But it won't count any more.
So you're going to allow people to enter the house when we leave?
Yes.
And just to re-clear, we're going to be moving forward if we do move forward with four.
Yeah, yes.
Now, who's the owner? Just to make that clear. It's either a perm application or sort of a four. Okay, and again, bear with me. So can your application use yourself as the applicant? But I do remember seeing somewhere that we had another name as being an agent. For our confusion.
This is my wife, Ryan, there who was, because that's a name you saw on there. That would be the only other person that would be.
Where did I get the name, Sarah Tannell? Okay, so not in your package. That's what I was looking for. So, your phone number here, that's probably your cell phone?
Yes.
So what happens if somebody calls at 2:00 in the morning and tells you there's a party owner at your house?
I would have to address that immediately, number one. And number two, we've got some arrangements with a couple of people to help local residents. They'll also be able to assist, but I would be the one to take care of them immediately. We're an hour and 15 minutes away. It would be responsible.
So, okay, so you probably want Deb or someone to know your background. It does sound like part of the application. But your application, you're going to be in Colorado or someplace. And we're going to need to know the contact, local, if you do have contact.
Yeah.
Not everybody does.
Yeah, we've already identified local and Shenanah Shore president. Those help us in can you man activities. And as said, we won't take part in that, but we certainly provide information.
Any questions, guys? Anything from you?
Anything for you, Michael?
Just a question regarding the occupancy. The parking was confirmed already. And Deb, you said that there was a approved zoning variance for this already?
Yes.
Yeah, that was, I think that should have been those last documents. No? That one didn't open up? Okay, all right. All right, Rich, anything from you? Any kind of questions?
I agree with Ralph, he's not really on his available. He needs a lot of the back.
So my question on the bathroom drain, by the way, it's page 13. Bathroom, washroom, basements, the actual car, the drain problem must be bad. Deb said it's wrong, there's a photo, which can't tell, but that's definitely something.
Okay, for sure.
It's not, it's just, I'm just asking. So Deb, we need you to comment on the smoke detectors and fire extinguishers. Because there wasn't any information that we listed earlier. Was that part of the purpose of the statement?
It was. Mr. C. Lander did send photos of installed smoke detectors. I haven't, you know, I haven't been there to see them firsthand, but I can read that.
Okay, Ralph, excuse me, I'm just going to interject here. You know, in the past, as we were approving the permits, if there was something missing like this, even if it was just one item, it was not, you know, everything had to be in order. All the questions had to be answered and everything had to be in order. So just FYI.
Sure. And then, sorry, I'm not completely over this. Your permit's not signed. On the last page of the permit, the property owner is supposed to sign it. So again, it's something that we've been taking care of, but it should not have gotten to this point. That's somebody else should have.
And again, I apologize, I did fill out some documentation with Joan right after the BCA meeting, including signing the document, dropping off with the check. And then I was asked to provide a second copy of the document. So the document I submitted already was signed. And then I provided a second copy of which was typed, so.
Will you sign courses of this one? It looks interesting. Just not with final signature.
All right, so if there are no more comments from the council members, I will open the floor to comments from the residents. But mind you, please, you will make a comment. There will be no discussion. We will not answer, you know, comments that are being made. Just be aware that you, you know, are given time to, you know, express your opinions. If you have, there are five opinions that are exactly the same, well, you know, try to keep them shorter, if you can, but we don't, do not discuss. Public comment section is a for public comments for us to hear, because we will consider those, you know, definitely. But this is something that you could just say, but we will not discuss, you know, within this group. So if there are any public comments now, please raise your hands. And especially identify yourself, give us your address of where you live. And then I hope you did sign in, because you should be on the list. Okay, go ahead, please.
I'm Jeff DeFields. We live at 3723 Bitter Sweet, directly at Lawson. We were at the BCA meeting when they did approve it. I also know that at the BCA meeting, there was not one comment that brought in that was actually for this. They were all against it. The only thing, the only people that were for this were three of the members and two denied, and people we have here. They're our neighbors. We welcome them to the neighborhood. But the concern we have is peaceful, surrendered type community. And we like to keep it that way. Just a block and a half from us on Michigan City side, they have some pretty wild parties at the White House. I don't know the exact address of it, but they got the pool in the backyard. You can hear that at our house. Not to mention what we're going to hear from this side. We could say we're going to have calm, cool, all adults, no children, whatever. But we all know when things happen, they happen. And it's going to happen. It's just a matter of time. It's not a matter of when, it's just a matter of time. So I would just like to say that we are strongly against it. We do welcome it to the neighborhood and wish them the best. Earlier, I think, was stated in the BCA meeting, maybe for supplementing their income to some sort of like that, to add this short-term rental. But if you were going to have a short-term rental, not knowing what I know now, but he commented before about the rules from the state. But I would have done one more homework where it was more welcome. And it's not so many people were against it. And around our little community, I call it our little community. Well, it's a couple of blocks there. We all know each other, we look out after each other. And if there's something going wrong here or there, try to take care of it. But when this starts to happen, I just, we're just strongly against it. But I appreciate you guys listening to us and giving us time to comment, say what this. I'm the only one in this little group that works still. Everyone else is retired. And I think they retire so they can enjoy their retirement and not have to put up with any nonsense. So I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Please.
My name is Rob Squire from Pre-Tank Brooklyn. And I'm wondering if the group has published recent data on how many violations of the codes renters have been found to have committed? And how much fines have been levied? And how probably those fines have been paid by people? Because I have a feeling that there might be an opportunity for the council to be more aggressive about the finding and the collections of all of that. And also, to the point of the house on Pinewood, perhaps this backup plan you referred to, where if you're an out-of-town owner slash landlord, I guess, and you're an hour and a half away or hour and 15 minutes away, what exactly is the plan for you to get there? And, you know, and how can we hold you accountable for this? I've been on the wrong side of this a number of times in a rental unit that's adjacent to my property. And there are, you know, hidden evidence, and it does take a while if they were going to come down. A lot of times, they have no idea what's going on at their property. They could place a phone call. The people who answer the phone could tell them anything at that point, and they wouldn't know that. So they're not even in any position to manage what's going on at their property. And I would submit that at 2:30 in the morning, if an owner gets called by somebody in the community, then an hour and a half later to drive down here and take care of that problem is an hour and a half too much. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay. All right, so, gentlemen?
Do you have a list of everything that needs to be all over tied up?
Well, we talked about the, Deb confirmed smoke detectors and fire extinguisher. The permit needs to be properly signed. It might be one of those, we don't know that. What I have is not. We don't have anything documentation-wise that I've seen yet that has been on people that are in occupancy. And there needs to be something done about the indoor air conditioning requirement, which is usually a problem on my side sometimes.
The issue about the mask? The drain?
That's, that was just an asset. You know, if you're going to have a bunch of strategy in your house, I'm not sure.
Right, but I mean, is that an issue that has to be addressed?
No, it's not.
Okay. All right.
Is that it? Ralph?
Yeah, that's also the third thing that came back up for technical reasons.
Do you require monoxide detectors? Or other?
Well, we don't specifically tell you what to use. We require indoor.
Actually, this does say. It does, I guarantee, it says, "Unit has a working smoke detector and carbon monoxide detector in or outside of sleeping areas and on all habitable floors."
What does that mean?
This is the actual permit application. Line two, under African owners comply, agree to comply with and meet the town of Michigan Shores' STR requirements below.
Let's check.
Here, we can pass this to you right now. Just pass it over.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'm looking at the same thing. That's on the same.
So just to kind of move this along, I'm going to vote that we hold off on approving this because of that and the other list of items may be not as serious. But if it's in there, carbon monoxide is not something that was addressed. I would like to hold off until all of this stuff is nice and organized and everything.
I would prefer that, because having a full package of information is good, too. I don't think, I think this has more information than I have sent, so it's good.
Vote with that said, at least share with them that information. They don't have a, here's what we have thus far. And we're not going to say that this is the end-all, be-all. Because for the most part, when we reviewed it, this is what we thought was opportunity to address before we approve.
Okay, and my suggestion would be that you would work with Deb Chubb with regards to making sure that everything is done and that she has checked and checked it all, you know, for you. Because Deb is going to be handling all the applications, permit applications. So to make sure that everything is completed and everything is done then, you know, for these kind of requirements. And that's a new assignment for Deb. It just started out for her, I believe, last week. You know, we appointed her to be in charge of doing that. So you wouldn't check, you know, with anyone else after the BCA has passed someone? Then it will devolve it to Deb to continue with the next application and the permitting and all this stuff. So, or at least the applications, not the permit. Any kind of questions from you now?
So if I take a look at the home inspection report that does reference a carbon monoxide, because that's the main issue, it sounds like, is the carbon monoxide monitor. And sink wasn't an issue. Deb validated that the smoke detectors are okay. We have fire extinguishers, so it's really just the one issue.
And I thought you said, though, too, that there was the number of occupancy in there. Like, I know that we could just manually calculate the washrooms and the bathrooms and the bedrooms, but I thought you said that they was in here. Is that right?
And again, I submitted the paperwork to Joan. I believe it was in that paperwork. And then I resubmitted, and I resubmitted it again. So I believe that the occupancy number should have been in the paperwork that Joan has. Joan provided some of the copies that included the BCA application and part of the permit. She said she would bring that to this meeting. So I believe it's just, I'm here, it's just for one issue. I just want to go through that inspection report.
Okay. If the repair section, the pattern that you gave us, that will have the information about smoke alarms, the photos and this sort of thing? Yes, I see that.
Just want to make sure I'm hearing that it's just the carbon monoxide detectors that the issue that was coming.
Carbon monoxide detectors, yes. I think having another number, having numbers that are, and including them on your permit for context, emergency context, and somebody local is very important. So please make sure you've got somebody, you know, names, numbers.
You refer to the window permit?
Well, yeah, then, you know, to include on this permit as well, so that not only do we know in here, you know, we know in here, who else can be contacted for, you know, for an emergency, especially if you don't have like a VRVR or Airbnb or somebody else who's listed as your, you know, manager will have somebody on within 20 minutes maybe or something like this responding. Because that might become, you know, an issue. And then this last page that is the rules, okay, of basically that you're agreeing to, definitely needs your signature, because these are all the things that are very important to making sure that, you know, the integrity of what the area is and stuff like that. So, you know, make sure that this part gets signed. So that's not an issue, but read it all.
And I did sign that in front of Joan.
Okay, but it's not the one that was submitted to us, so unfortunately.
I would say this, Joan, one, I mean, the cabinet, the provider, it's signed. So it's just a version that I have that has a signature.
So you guys want me to start understanding then, because I'm hearing?
What is that, the signature? You have the signed one? Okay. All right, good. Okay, so there is, okay, you've got none there. All right. Okay, thank you.
Let's make it maybe one or two. The county records, 787, three full baths. Obviously, the inspection says two, so.
County records, correct.
County records, correct.
Yeah.
So there are three full baths.
There are three full baths. So just want to make sure I understand, so it's just the one issue then is the carbon monoxide detector?
And the contact numbers.
Yes, fair enough.
Okay, that's important. It really is, so, okay.
And I'll verify with Joan about the occupancy numbers.
Okay.
It's on a piece of paper, that's why, it's not a paper.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments, gentlemen?
No.
No, okay. So in that case, the permit would be, once all of this information is out, then the council will consider, you know, will have to make an official law amendment. Okay?
So I need to submit evidence of the carbon monoxide detector, provide the contact information, and then come back in the next meeting?
We will, you know, you've been here. I don't know if we need you to come back again next time or as long as it's submitted through Deb, because Deb is going to handle it. To make sure.
Yeah, the other question was, we don't necessarily.
Yeah, but make sure that she gets it, not to Joan. If you drop it off here, address everything that it goes to Deb. Okay, please? Because we'll have one conduit to make sure that one person is the contact for all the information that's going through. So things don't get slipping between them, kind of stuff, okay?
Understood.
All right. Great, thank you. Okay. Next, we have a permit at 501 L. Porter. All right. 501 Porter, here we go. I got this one here. Do we have the owner for 501 L. Porter here? Oh, hi, okay. All right. I know this is wasting paper, but that's why I opened it up to be able to see.
While they're looking, one of the only things that I saw on here was kind of what you had mentioned, the appendix two, making sure that you have names, contact information in case there's anything wrong. Needs to be affixed to the window permit of who to contact in case of emergency, case of issues or whatever.
It is on the, it says that I am the...
But I'm just saying, the part that, the actual window, like, once we're all done.
Or did we create that?
There should have been a blank copy on the back of the...
You gave that to us.
No, that's written, right, too.
Yeah, so just make sure it's up there.
I made sure it went inside of the house, because it also said to me, one, with all the emergency contacts, and the fire, and the meeting, and my...
Yeah, and I figured you probably, bang, tap and see the house, obviously. Just make sure it's up, so that emergency responders can see it.
Yeah, and it is a bright green card that should be in the front window so easily seen, you know, by someone from the street. Okay?
Okay, so the question I have is, and I'll have to back once, it's kind of a two. There is a phone number listed in the application, 312-559661. And I think that was for the owner?
Yeah, there's two owners, one south of Plant Haven. That's the one.
Okay, so what happens when somebody calls up?
He lives here at South 29. In Long Beach. And I live at South 26, at 2600 Bell Plain. And Suzie, who works for our company, she lives, she works down from me, also on Bell Plain. And my brother, who's an attorney, who is a homeowner behind me, also from.
So you guys are all, all...
Yeah, yeah. I always had a shuttle, and it can be two and four hours, and I have to split my time. But I'm here the entire summer months.
Okay.
The other one I mentioned, you do the roof.
Okay, and then another number for Susan Sullivan?
Yes, Susan Sullivan, yes.
And who is she different than you guys?
That's me. Signing my signature.
So what number are you going to give these people who are staying there?
The first number will be Suzie's.
Mine. And we've actually spoken to our neighbors and dropped off information with our emails and our cell phone numbers. But these, the dentist who was here for the BCA meeting, first next to us, and Christie Merkel, and now the people behind me in the red house, but that is.
Okay.
And to the building to the south of us is a office building, and we've reached out.
I have.
Oh, you did?
So you...
Yes.
So there was one thing in the inspection report stood out, and that was that the damper was inoperable and a returning fireplace. That's why. Now, I don't know if anybody looked it up or addressed it, but you have a lot of people coming into these rental units that don't have a squad of fireplaces and fires. And if they don't, they may not even know how a damper works in the first place, but if it's inoperable...
It was, it was by all checks. And I had called someone to fix it, and just haven't been able to get them out yet. But I presume I have a little time for someone to expire inside the house, you know?
Ah, sure.
September 1.
That will soon.
What?
Yeah.
It actually wasn't one that our hired inspector moved very nice to make a list of what they thought were reactive issues, you know what I mean? So I went and bought three more smoke and carbon. We got a little hard, because we had all the electrical rooms, and like few little electrical things, and so I guess that's one of them.
Okay, and it is a big building, so you have adequate number of fire extinguishers?
Yes, there are, they're hard wired. There might be 10 of them. But I wanted to make sure, so about three more, because I didn't know if they had carbon monoxide, and I didn't know how to test it. And my husband's volunteer fireman, and I asked him, so we went and bought three more.
Okay, but I'm saying... But fire extinguishers?
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear it.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yes, same thing. Talked to my husband. The inspector said there was one, and he said, "I think you should get another one." And so he said, "Go buy the biggest one you can buy." So there's one in the pantry, and one in the kitchen.
Okay. All right, so we just need to make sure about the fireplace then? You know, that that is addressed.
Can I make one? I really enjoyed hearing the photographs of these comments, and I found one about wanting to live in a community that doesn't have rental units to be, you know, very interesting. And I just had a suggestion for that, and that maybe there could be some awareness now to the realtors that are representing Michigan Shores. Okay, this one we, we leave off. If I would have told that, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have walked properly. We saw the commercial building next door and South Fifty across the street. And so I just, you know, just to say, I think if the word... I've been in this community since 2010, and anyway, nobody said it, nobody said it to me. So I enjoyed hearing that.
I think to discourage people is just, I think, what you want.
Well, it's not that. People need to know the facts when they're going into a situation, and they shouldn't be surprised. That's what you're trying to get at, is you aren't aware that it was those complicated...
They're not complicated, not wanting.
Well, when I read it, it was...
I have our children's notes, right?
What, no, maybe not 30 days.
When I read the ordinance, it kind of changed me, and I know this is crazy, but I said to Deb, it sounded like, you know, they were having a discussion in the community, and they want to figure out how to do it so everybody could be happy. And this is what they came up with, which is not the case at all. What you really wanted to do, I mean, I read it completely the other way, and I said it to them. And she did say anything, because she can't tell me. But then, the more I read and going through this process, it's clear you don't want them. And I don't know how to break that. It would have helped us a ton. We didn't know any of your inkeepers tax on top of your retail tax, 12%. We know all that. Perhaps you would...
And regardless of the process, I do really care about what everybody in this community wants. And so hearing that from a member of the community that it's something not wanted, it's not really the process. To me, how long the process takes, the steps, is part of the steps for what it is. Hearing somebody else's wishes, I'd like to make, I'd like other people to be happy. And so hearing that is something that I had never heard before. And so I just wanted to say, maybe there's another way to really spread that amongst...
Thank you. All right, yes, we do. Now, I see, okay, hold on just a minute, Rob, okay? If, do we have more council comments with regard, or questions with regards to this application?
I did not, because I reviewed it.
Okay.
It was organized.
Okay, all right. Now, public comments at this point. All right, Mr. Scott?
Just to respond to your comment about that, I think that people may have been very open-minded to the idea of rentals, and certainly no one would have judged anybody the opportunity to make a real estate investment in this country, in this community. The problem is, is that the reality of it is different from... the reality of it is different from the aspiration of it.
Right.
And we've seen in, in our house, and have called our neighbors to ask many times, obviously, who own this property, that people just don't behave.
Yeah.
When they come down here, and they spend $250 a night to rent a place, and they've got crammed all these extra people in there, they go beyond the limit of the place, and then what do they do? The first thing they do is that they, this is a party, I can see them carrying all the alcohol into the backyard, I'm not an opponent of that, but nevertheless, it just happens, and the, and the owners are usually, you're an exception, because that's impressive, that you have so many people down here who can be hands-on and stop something when it happens, but for many people, that is just not the case.
Okay.
And they have no, as I said before, they have no idea what's actually going on in their rental...
All right, thank you, Rob, for the comment, did you have something else?
I also want to add some, I really hope that this village has a plan in place to...
Oh, excuse me, now, these are just only to this 501 L portal, are you going to say...
My concern is, I would hope that you're going to limit giving out more rentals until you have a way to levy and, and collect fines, because I live on the other side of the gentleman that's, he's talking about, and apparently, there is no way that we can force this gentleman, he's been fined twice, and apparently, he won't pay, so I'll just say, warning to all those people that have renters moving next door, they can do whatever they want, you have nothing you can do about it, you can call the police, and vouch for the police all the time, and have them show up, and don't be quiet, but that's all they can do, is sort of what I understand.
Could you state your name and address, sir?
Please.
Bill Lang, 300 Brooklyn.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Lang. All right, all right, gentlemen.
Got one more I got.
Oh, one more, oh, yeah, Sharon, sorry. Sharon, identify yourself and address.
Sharon Cadlec, I attended the last BCA, and your address was disgusting, and I believe, Ralph, you sent a document or a letter concerning turning into that street.
Yes.
Nobody's addressing that, I mean, that is a tight, just like Ralph said, that's a tight corner to get in, and dangerous, and not that this will happen, but what if you do get a party at your house, and those cars start lining up on the street, because the house...
Well, we do the closed-door rules, so the police...
Okay, my question for them, though, is, are the police circling the neighborhood, and if they see that, they'll go to the house, or what happens? Because you had a very good point.
Well, to your point about people parking on the street, to be honest, if it's the Fourth of July weekend, the really argument is people park everywhere, people that live here full-time, have friends from over, and they park where they can, so that's a, that's a difficult kind of question, it's against the rules, yes, but I...
But what if somebody has to go down the street to their house, and the cars are...
It's a very narrow street, and it's a tough turn.
But are our local police monitoring that on weekends, and it's easy, or Saturday night, and catch that particular problem?
Okay, thank, all right, well, I appreciate your comment, Sharon, thank you very much, okay. All right. Any more questions here? Any more comments? Rich? Ralph?
No.
Okay, do I have any kind of a motion on this?
I don't have any of this information on 501, so how many people can sleep in that room? That's the old fire station.
Yeah, it is.
On the, on the...
Ten, ten is the limit, that, yeah, ten is the limit.
I know that we've had concerns about the fire trucks being able to make turns and stuff, so hopefully, I'm sure our chief can answer if they're parked on the street, does it water?
Not just water.
You'll remove the doctor?
Correct, if they're obstructing the roadway, we will have to tow the vehicle, but otherwise, we should take into vehicles, but if it is an obstruction, we will tow the vehicle, we cannot contact the owners, but we will make every attempt to contact the owner first before we have to tow the vehicle, the last thing we want to do is inconvenience somebody by towing their vehicle, so...
Okay, thank you.
And please, I would encourage anyone to call us and give us the opportunity to look into some of these complaints, whether you think it's a nuisance complaint or not, we welcome the opportunity to call to look at it, one of the short-term rentals we've dealt with here recently, I communicated both with the council, with Deb, and I think as a police department, we've done an excellent job of communicating when the issues do arise, to bring it to your attention, we're not ignoring them, I bring it to your attention, and if it is in fact a violation of that, you know, we can move forward with that, the number one piece of evidence we have is law enforcement, when we respond to any of these complaints, everything we do, our activity, is on our body panels, so if there's 30 people out drinking in the front yard, and it says 10 people on your occupancy and that, there's no, no arguing that fact, our body camera, which is going to show 30 people in the front yard, and 10 on the deck, so we've got that evidence that we could always supply to you as well, for your attorney, because a lot of these will come down to a civil issue on the penalties, if in fact you decide to take the civil action, collecting penalties through the civil processing, but we are here to help in any way we can.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
All right, gentlemen, then I ask for a motion on, on this particular application, 501 L portal.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, and your motion is?
To vote on providing a short-term rental permit for the address of...
Okay, pending, anything about the fireplace, the damper? That is still missing?
Well...
You, you did bring that up, so I...
Let's talk about that, what's the best approach there? I'm not one in favor of approving things for people to get back to us with preapproving this, because to be fair, it might take a month or two before they get somebody else to do that, so maybe, maybe we have to delay.
That would be my thought, that would be a better suggestion, because if we already withheld from 415, in order to get things, you know, in order, then this would have to be completed for us to...
Well, an alternative for you would be to temporarily close off the apartments.
I agree, that's a good suggestion.
You know, remove it from the listings now, and get that information, photos of it, and that sort of thing to Deb, and then come back.
Yeah.
We feel comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Couldn't we hold a condition?
Uh-uh.
No, where?
That we just didn't, we just...
We just denied.
Did the same thing, denied 415, so we can't approve for someone else, if it's something that, you know, was brought up as an issue or question. So, all right, so Ralph, so then...
Next step, so then we get it fixed, we tell her, and then maybe we have a next meeting?
Yes, yes.
In the pockets.
Whether you close it off completely, or you actually get it repaired, okay? Okay, all right, we thank you for appearing, and we'll be waiting to hear, get your paperwork and stuff like that, to make sure everything is all done. Okay, your carbon monoxide's over there, make sure that those are in, and take care of this thing and whatever, I think there was one more, oh, your numbers, your contact people's, okay? All right, thank you very much. All right, we will move on, the reports from committee's officers and clerk treasurer, council, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so Joan's not here, I was going to...
Well, we do have all of them, she provided them to everybody, I've got copies here, so we could technically look at them and sign them, if we need, I made photo, you made paper copies of those.
Okay.
So, Rich, did you get copies of these from Joan, or not? The vouchers?
Yes.
The vouchers, her reports?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, now, you've got them online here, you're good, do you have them online, the things that I sent through?
All of you.
Pardon?
I'm, I'm you.
Okay, all right, then...
How do we do without Joan?
Well, basically, all Joan does is present them to us, she reads them to us, and that's all, so we have the...
So she's not reading?
I'll read.
That's just a program.
All right, that's awesome, let's do, this is what we're going to do, we will do, we'll, I'll name it by name, and then ask for questions first, and then we'll figure out what we do, okay? So the June 30th, 2022 payroll comes up with a total of $18,568.65. Were there any questions from council members on this?
I don't think so.
Okay, if there are no questions from the council members, then I need a motion to approve these vouchers.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ralph Fox moves to approve, Michael Martinez seconds, okay, Ralph Fox has moved to approve the vouchers for the June 30th, 2022 payroll, Michael Martinez is seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, the four ayes have it, and this vow, these vouchers will be approved, please, I will pass this along, you sign it, I'll sign it at the end, then, okay? As I start moving to the next one, the next one is the June 2022 additional vouchers, these things include various, the, the fees that are being, you know, for, for all the various different other things, it was the quarterly, what is it? Not quarterly, what am I saying? Okay, oh, various other expenses that meant, that went out, the office expenses, and so on and so forth, so this was $3,393.39. Were there any questions amongst the council members?
Not really.
Rich, did you have any questions on those?
No.
Michael?
No.
No, okay, in that case, then I'll ask for a motion to approve these vouchers.
Motion to approve these vouchers.
Okay, Michael Martinez has moved to approve, approve the additional vouchers for June 2022, I need a second?
Yes.
Rich Young seconds, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, or ayes, and the vouchers have been approved, okay, here we go, the third set are the July 2012, 22 vouchers, these include the police protection, various office expenses, refusess pickup for July, the payment that goes out in the middle, in July, risk undertakers, this is our general insurance, and then for fire protection, and this total comes up to $14,596.19. Any questions, gentlemen?
No.
Nothing? All right, in that case, I will ask for a motion to approve this, these vouchers?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Ralph Fox moves to approve the July 12, 2022 vouchers, I need a second, Rich Young seconds, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so, all ayes, and these vouchers have been approved. All right, there was the sum, although there was no second sheet over here, I don't have it for the gross payroll for Deb's truck, but that total came out to, and this included all, you know, the money, the weight, that switched back and forth, $4,292.32. I don't have the sign-in sheet, but I still need my motion, so on, any questions?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept.
All right, Ralph Fox has moved to accept, I need a second, Rich Young seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, as well, okay, so the ayes have it, and this voucher has been approved, okay, thank you very much, all right, we are done with this section. Okay, so let us move on to the next, and we are going to, I don't remember what's my agenda here, I'll write a short report from Jean Paxton, I did not get anything in writing from Jean, she is rather busy at these days, but I will be happy to report to you, some of you may know this already, some may not, but the numbers have gone up to 188, who have registered for the family picnic, which is a really nice number, so you're frowning, Samantha.
No.
I didn't know if that was a happy frown or a sad frown.
Yeah, it smells good.
So those are wonderful numbers, I'm just going to see if she actually sends something through to my phone, just in case, all right, there's nothing else from her, okay, I don't think in there, let's wait a minute, let's do one more, see if there's an email that came in late, no, nothing that came in late, okay, so anyway, but they're, they've got a great committee working, and I have to say that I thank, now publicly, so everybody would know, Jean has been doing an absolutely phenomenal job organizing the 75th birthday or anniversary celebration of the family picnic, she's found a lot of donors for, you know, to help us, you know, fund this event, and great people volunteering to work, and people who haven't been involved in a lot of town things, which is really, really awesome, you know, to get that going, so it should be a lot of fun, and remember, come on over, the parade starts, lineup starts at 9 o'clock, parade will be at 10, there will be coffee and bagels, provided by Big B Coffee, when you get there, so, and now you know how many numbers are coming, you know, numbers have increased, right? So, come on over for coffee, there's going to be Sam Paxton has been smoking, you know, pork butts for pork butt san, for sandwiches, and there will be hot dogs, and I know there's ice cream and cookies, and, you know, and other things, various games for both adults and children, pickleball, horseshoes, and, you know, some other things are taking place, so I really hope that everybody can come, if anybody's listening online, you know, so please give Jean a call still, or somebody at the town to let them know that you're coming, otherwise, we look forward to seeing everyone there. Okay, so that's pretty much their report, let us go on, now, resolutions and ordinances, we have not worked on this, however, there are two things that we wanted to, I think that we're going to need to address, and we will have to work on this, we've had several questions with regards to the noise ordinance, and we had a response, and actually, it was a good thing that Chief Swistec, Swistec actually brought to our attention, that within the actual, you know, body of the ordinances, one is very clear, and that addresses construction noise, things for that, and then, of course, there was a second one, and I know that Michael has since, just recently, informed Chief Swistec about, is that buried within the 2020-02 ordinance, which refers to the short-term ordinances, there is an ordinance in there, you know, the requirements about the, you know, the times with regards to noise and noise abatement, so, but we want to put this into a much better ordinance, so we are going to work on something like this, gentlemen.
Yeah, so let me clarify for you, we have three sections in our various parts of the code, and we talk about noise kind of stuff, and the codified code document, in chapter seven, talk about noise abatement, which deals with construction, lawn noise, home maintenance, and all of that kind of thing, and the hours throughout from that are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and 11:00 to 5:00 on Sundays and holidays, in the, we also have a separate fireworks ordinance, 2014-02, where we talk about when you can have fireworks, and I'm going to read it, just because I was a little surprised, I knew we could have fireworks, I just didn't know the specific details, right? So you can have fireworks 5:00 a.m. to 2 hours after sunset, June 29th through July 3rd, on July 4th, you can have fireworks from 10:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m., and then from July 5th to July 9th, you can have fireworks from 5:00 p.m. to 2 hours after sunset, and then, in the short-term rule ordinance, 2020-02, we have quiet hours defined, it's not a noise thing per se, the quiet hours are 10:00 a.m. Sunday through Thursdays, and midnight Friday and Saturdays, so, to me, we need to work on this, there's a lot of potential issues here, and I want to kind of take the lead, and...
Great, that sounds awesome.
Some ideas, I'm going to need to work with you a bit, Doug, to understand whether we need to modify ordinances, do we do resolutions, what's the right way to do this, with the fireworks thing, the next time you can have fireworks is...
New Year's Eve, that's it.
But in general, I just want to make sure we do it cleanly and precisely, and then it's consistent across the town in all areas, right now, it's all whole, it's, it's...
All right, you got three, and we'll talk about this, obviously, but first thing I would say is, you have three things that are two, three very specific types of noises, you know, your, your construction type noise, then your firework noise, then the short-term rentals, but I would also, what I would put out on the short-term rentals, if I want to check that timing with, I think this Friday and Saturday commencing, 12 a.m., 12 a.m. Friday is Thursday night, right, and that's when...
Yeah, I'm going to have it...
I know, I know, but I saw that on the... So that's little things like that, well, so that's one thing you may want to picture that, those three ordinances are probably fine, not really a lot of creating, is a noise or nuisance ordinance, just to go, that's where you're going to find, that is a nuisance.
Okay, great, thank you very much, all right, Ralph, so we will count on you, you know, to handle that particular, you know, ordinance.
All of them.
Okay. Now, actually, I included here a proposal regarding increasing BZA fees. We have a report that I think that, I'm sorry.
We have questions on the, at the end?
At the end. Yeah, only at the end, no. Let's see, there's a report, I believe everybody received, this would be under the BZA reports. But the BZA has several times, you know, asked us about increasing costs to be able to cover actual costs, because the amount has been very low. So I believe in the past, that I just cannot remember whether we did it via ordinance or resolution, to change the fees. To change fees. Yeah, I'm sorry, you know, so do you, I mean, I'm not sure whether we need an ordinance to achieve. I do know that it has to be a public hearing, so we will announce it here, you know, officially, but, you know, just asking a question, because that's an ordinance that we would like to work. I wanna make sure, if it's an ordinance or a resolution, that we get ourselves working on it.
How do you have any, I haven't seen your code.
The code, okay, well then we'll talk about that later on, but that'll be a second.
Depending on how you have codified within the rules for your Philly code, for your reports on the community.
Okay. All right, we'll take a look at it.
As far as executive discussion.
Yeah, we can do that, we can do that further, okay, all right. All right, so let's move on, and the next thing goes departmental reports. So the first one we have is Police Chief Mark Sust.
Good evening, everyone, I'd like to start recapping the Fourth of July holiday weekend, consisted of four days, starting on Friday, and then on Monday, very active for Long Beach Police Department, in reference to the three communities that we serve. Our reunion was very active on Lake Michigan, we patrol from the White House in Michigan City, all the way up to the Michigan State line, including the town of Michigan and the shores. We had two of our deputies out on ATVs on beach patrol, additional officers were on patrol in all three of the communities, to improve this community as well. We managed seventy-three calls for service, which resulted in no arrests, which was very exceptional. We did have a golf cart that was impounded on Lake Shiller Drive, in between the Duma Beach community and this community. It's the second golf cart we've impounded in recent weeks. The teenage occupants fled from us, and both of those golf carts were from Grand Beach, Michigan. So, I'm just letting you know, we discussed it, our license lien here, golf cart enforcement and that. So we have towed two golf carts in recent weeks, and officer, I'd like to announce, more than likely, underage children. Aside from that, our reserve deputies, which I am exceptionally proud of, do an excellent job. What they are, they are volunteers. Many of them own either their own businesses, they're professionals in their own careers and that. They volunteer time, they're sworn law enforcement officers, they go through the same train, and we go through, except they do not attend the Indiana Law School Academy for the holiday weekend, they have worked a hundred and twenty-four hours, which equates to approximately thirty-six hundred dollars in savings to our overtime workers. So I'm very, very happy with their performance, and actually, your street commissioner, his son, Nick Sokowski, is actually one of our reserve deputies, does an excellent job. So thank you to him as well. For parts of the month of June, the Long Beach Police Department responded to two hundred and fifty-two overall calls for service, when compared to two hundred and twenty-three in the previous year for an increase of twenty-nine calls for service. During the month of June, we had nine incident reports, which resulted with seven individuals arrested. Three of them were felony arrests, one for felony theft, felony burglary, and felony operating vehicle while intoxicated. Four additional arrests were traffic misdemeanor offenses. Of those four arrests, three were additional, operating while intoxicated arrests. Several of those occurred out here on U S twelve, in between the three communities that we do serve. Permit to the town of Michigan and the shores, back on June seventh, Deputy Jason Yagelski was on routine patrol here in the town. Just off of Michigan Drive, we observed an unknown burglary suspect. We ran the information on the individual, the individual was wanted out of the state of Michigan on active warrants for burglary. Deputy Yagelski called in additional patrols from Michigan City and the state of Michigan. They were able to apprehend the individual here in the town of Michigan and the shores, and the individual was transferred over to the village of Michigan and Michigan, law enforcement authorities, and were then transported to Berry County Jail, to answer for us in Morse there. Aside from that, we continue to conduct extra patrols, weekend evenings here in the town, and will continue to do so. And we're looking to move the radar trailer here in the near future to Kinkin Park area.
Super, thank you very much.
And this Saturday, Sergeant, I'm sorry, Sergeant Jim Sully will be here for the parade. I apologize, I cannot attend, because I am working at midnight, the night before getting off, six o'clock in that morning, and I do need my sleep. This is my road commissioner. So while you're going to be partying, I'm gonna be sleeping.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
Your old chief, I did that. And it shows from the lack of rest.
Thank you very much for the report. Fire Chief Gary Bendix is not here, he did send in a report, which I shared with the council members and with the clerk treasurer. Bob, do you have anything to add, since you're one of the?
No, nothing to add, you've all written the report, because sort of public knows, we worked, we attended a hundred and thirty-six point two-six hours for the month, and quite a few calls for service. Do you want to go through them, or?
If you might, yes, go ahead.
On the third, at eight fifty, there was a bridge lady called the Long Beach Fire at St. Morstan Drive. On the fifth, Whitefoot Drive, burgling violation, and this is an ongoing problem, or burning stuff that's not supposed to be burned. That's in the county, so we transferred it. On the seventh, and on the eighth, we responded from Bridge Lady, we got a call, the Suburban Drive, it's mentioned in the township. On the eighth, Five Mile West, we got a call. On the eleventh, Lake Shore Drive, we had a elevator rescued in Michigan, Michigan, was the first arrest. On the sixteenth, I watched a drive, we got a call. Again, that was at twenty thirteen, or eight thirteen, and then eight thirty-eight, we were back at the house again. Twentieth, Tahoma, the wire's down. Twenty-fifth, the South Trail, we do the beach for medical call. Twenty-seventh, at five twelve AM, on Pave Drive for a medical call. Six twenty-seven, at seven twenty-five PM, on board with a grass fire. On the twenty-eighth, Groveland Trail for medical call, and the thirtieth, Iowa Station Trail for medical call.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. Okay, any questions for Chief? Nope. Great job, thank you to the fire department. Just like we thank the police department, very much. Building Commissioner, Code Enforcement Officer, Depp Chubb.
So I did mail and then provide a hard copy of my report. We have nine permits issued, several for Blue Rose, couple of VCs, one for interior. Demolition, remodeling, that was the case we had, where we had people working with no permit, and ended going there and rip a bunch of stuff out, because they've done it so poorly, just there. Advisory Plan Commission met on July fifth, but didn't have any plans to review, so nothing happened there. We do have unresolved staff reporters that are out there pending still. Three six oh-one, Lake Shore Drive, Attorney Marenberg is working on that particular issue. Three six two-one, Hunter Train, you know, had its staff recorder in place, and we're just not going anywhere until we're looking for some legal assistance there, it'd be great. Just issued this citation regarding the dissected area, three six two-seven, Hunter Train, no, sorry, how it happened. But, and then, just giving you a heads up, but BZA expects to hear from just one person next time for short-term rental, special use request.
Okay, all right.
So you have another question, and it has to do with people that are, that you're working with, with shirts and murals, that really are together, not to maybe go in front of a BZA yet, because are there many of those?
No.
Okay. Well, Joan has told me of a few that have just started on the line, it's just, I've brought it up a year ago, and I've never pursued it.
Right, and you will have to deal with one that has not been permitted, who's been fighting, getting a permit, and has been violated from the ordinance by without a permit for some time, and has been cited many times. So, you will have to deal with that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Cardboard, Molly Millick.
Yeah, the Cardboard hasn't done too much, but Mick did put mow, shim, and park, it looks real nice. He did a job with that, he had a couple of workers helping, and it looks nice, and the park looks real nice, I mean, everything is
It does look good, it's been ready in the pan, it fixed up, and it keeps falling.
Yes, it does, okay. And I understand that Mick also did the mowing on the path, right?
Yeah, yeah, but he didn't do the old path. He did the path.
Oh, but not the hillside, okay.
But he did it pretty wide, okay. And I put up the new signs, and dumped all the, from the old path, the signs didn't say what's legal or what's not. And then the one from the ENR, that was covered, I put them both in. I have to buy eight four-by-four posts, put the signs up at the other new path, and
Well, that's the rest I've heard. And the benches are pretty nice, I don't know.
Yes, they do, yes, yes, we have.
Christie and Jim, they did a really good job handling the pitch. They even have a tablecloth.
I saw, that was for the holiday, yeah. Rich is referring to Jim and Christie Vanes, town residents who are taking care of the, you know, that entrance to the path in El Cora.
And they put the plants in at the beach.
Oh, okay, thank you very much for letting us know. Okay. All right, let us, if that's it, Molly, then I can move on? All right, thank you. Road Commissioner, Bob Sokowski.
I know half the hours I covered in the Joe, the first one, for payables.
Okay.
Basically, the zones, I went through twenty, fifty, thousand bags, and a patch, and how we're gonna go through the other ones.
But I can say we wanted to fix it, they gave it to me.
The blue pine sandwich is further on, if you can, if I could touch on that, one took a picture, it's at least eight foot off the end of the roadway. So, if he has a witness to this, Bob, hit that, ask him to come forward, say it's off.
Yeah, thank you, I know, I drove over there too, to take a look at it, and I said the only thing I could find was the cover for the water. You know, and, which is, I think, the same thing that we're talking about, and it projects maybe half an inch above the surface level, so I have no idea. Yeah, okay, well, thank you very much for checking that out, so we'll eliminate that from, from that other, the latter part of our reports. Okay, thank you, Bob. Advisory Plan Commission, Ralph, anything special?
Well, we did not have a family meeting, because there was nothing to put in front of us. We did have a discussion about updating the comprehensive plan, the ongoing effort to update that. We're not to the point yet where we have anything to review or publish for comprehensive plans.
Okay, so we're on comprehensive plan review, okay. BZA, there was a report here, I know that you received the report. I hope that, Rich, did Joan give you a copy? You do have one, okay. So in general, the report to the council was that four of the five members were present, Joe Briney being absent, two hearings on the agenda for special use for STRs, five oh-one L portal, and fourteen Powhatan. And then it goes on to say, you know, it was the one, the first one was approved with a vote of four yes, zero, no, and the third one, it was three yes and one no for fourteen Powhatan. The board previously reviewed the costs associated with the petition for short-term rental, and determined that the fee of one hundred and fifty is not sufficient. The board requests that the town council increase the fee to two hundred and fifty to cover the actual costs. We did ask them to note this for us, because, you know, then it will give us, you know, the authority to begin, you know, a change, in case we have to do something. Upcoming meetings, August twenty-fifth, October twenty-seventh, and January nineteenth. These are the next scheduled meetings, all meetings begin at six thirty PM. The BZA board is asking that these dates be posted on the town website, along with Depp Chubb's contact information, and a statement that all files must be complete by the last business day of the month, prior to the meeting, in order to be put on the agenda for the following month. I'll send this to you, so you can see this too, yes, and it says, note, if no cases are to be heard, meetings may be canceled. And that is their prerogative, they don't ask us, they can do, you know, what they need to do, so.
I would like to comment that now that we're getting even the draft report minutes from the meeting prior to the one meeting, it's been very helpful. It's normally, I don't get the information until after the meeting.
Right.
So if we can keep that up.
Now, I don't know, I don't think that there was a draft copy added this month.
Oh, so what?
This was just a report, it was a special report to the town. This is a report, an actual report, but, you know, I think it is a good idea to get all the details, that's nice, and I will ask for that. Yeah, but this was their official report, yes, okay, thank you. Next is Whitefish Rennet, where there was no meeting today, they canceled it, I'm not sure why. Oh, that's right, that's right, I forgot, that's right. I just told Ray that we have to go to the ferry, that we haven't done that this week. So, and then, I just wanna, I don't have it listed here, but it's NRC, the Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission, will have a meeting on July twenty-first at nine AM, so I will be attending that.
Where are those meetings held?
At Portage, like this business center.
Could I happen to cover it?
Yes. I'll give you an address.
Can I have a slide to go, I just?
Really? I'll give you an address to go.
I want to know what's going on with the back path, Greenway Trail thing.
Very good, okay. Oh, yeah, they're well.
It's discussed, the website is not useful.
No, it is not, you can't get much info, okay. Unfinished business, the next steps in the road grant application process. Joan isn't here, so we cannot discuss exactly how much money there is available for us to use on this. She did say that we do have monies to use for it. And then we will have to figure out on what we do on this, but just FYI, I think I forwarded some information to you about the application, that we are able to apply until the end of August, August thirty-first, I believe, it's been extended, until that time. So I don't want us to wait until then, but we do have to, to move on this.
So let me ask you this, this is Walter, Joan tells us how much we have in the budget.
Yes.
And that?
Oh, excuse me, yes, Brandon?
Joan gave you that information.
Oh, she did, good.
Thirty-four thousand.
Oh, great.
Thirty-four thousand is available for us, Chief?
A little bit more.
Okay.
Well, that's a very certain way.
Okay.
And that would cover two things. One is the, I'll call it generic engineering portion, and the other is the matched, the funds, the state matches at the seventy-five percent.
Yes.
Side of things. So, our next step, how much we have, is to choose a vendor, so to speak, to work with, go through the detailed process.
Right. Yes, yes, so now we have a choice of, you know, we did hear, we, the little bit we heard from Mr. Doyle, who we've had before, we heard from, what, the last name, Aliot's the first name? I, no.
Shum.
Shum, okay, there we go. Who had given us the, his presentation, but we did that online. And I'm sure there are probably other engineering firms too, if we want to see about contacting a third one then. You know, with regards to this, I don't know if we need it or not, so.
We've talked to, we have estimates. So I'm not, is this something we have to vote on, or do to go with, or is this?
Well, you know, in the past, we just had the one person ever come in, so we never voted on anything. I think, right, Rich, it was just that Mr. Doyle, who used to come in, that's who we used, correct? Sort of like, had a So So anyway, at this point, I think that we probably don't need to vote, I mean, well, I guess we do have to agree, as to whether or not we're going to file. You know, are we gonna complete these, you know, applications?
Well, absolutely, it's free money.
It is, it's free money for us to get, so we just need to make, I probably meet up together with the engineering firm to discuss actually what kind of a cost it might be, if we start talking about which roads that we would do, you know, because we can make sort of a determination on that already. And then, you know, and then talk to them, because I think, according to what I recall from their presentation, is that if we know which streets, that would sort of give an idea of how much it may take for them to give us those engineering estimates that we need to get from them. Correct, am I understanding that? Depending on the state of the streets, I think, is what it was, is what I think he said.
How do you solicit from the?
Mr. Doyle has been doing these for us for years.
Right, listen, so does he submit something?
We, no, he had, he had contacted the town, and he prepared, last fall, and he actually prepared the PISA report for us. We, no, he had, he had contacted the town and he prepared, last fall, and he actually prepared the P A S A report for us, which gets, you know, and then we got set up with an I T A P account, I T A P. And, and then, but there were questions raised in meeting, you know, by some of the councilmen, that why is it that we only have this one firm that always does this? Can we check with someone else? And we checked with this other firm, they're involved in other issues, but we just checked with them because it was just someone we had found out about as an engineering firm in Michigan City, to ask what they would say, so that we would get a point of view from somebody else, so.
So it wasn't quite a formal R F Q or...
No, no, no.
But that's where you could take it, is...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get to, do we need to do something like that? If we do, let's move quick.
Yeah, and do we need to go to somebody else yet for another?
No, I mean, depending on the amount that you're talking about, you're not at the level where you're, I mean, you're soliciting votes essentially and you vote between who you solicit from.
Yeah.
You know, over a certain amount, you have to publish to get bids or hearings, if you're not...
Yeah.
The total project would be enough to where you'd have to do that.
That's the total project. The data issue stays, just to get the, the...
The bids, right.
To be able to match application, the grant application.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Who's writing the grant?
I think that we're going to be writing, the council members are really going to be working on this to write this, you know, this time.
It's very, very, very difficult.
Yeah, well, I'm working with...
We have a professional that knows how to do it.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. So I've been helping, working with the, just talking to, goodness, now I forgot her name.
It's hard to talk to.
Yeah. Well, they do, they also help, they help walk you through to getting it all done. Well, that one of those one does, so I think that we should be fine, you know, and getting that done. Okay, let's move on to ARPA fund uses. Do we have any more info on the hybrid meeting equipment or not yet?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
I really think top gear, and see if you'll give me the password for the Far House Wi-Fi.
Okay.
I did talk to the firm again about the strength of Wi-Fi signal and stuff like that, basically. You just got to try. So my recommendation is going to be next month, that we approve the equipment, because it's going to work. We'll, either the Xfinity connection we get from here, we get the connection from the car department. But I'm going to stick with, we'll spend the $1,200 bucks and just get the basic and try it out. And if we need to add more functionality, like they have in Long Beach, we can add to it as we go.
Okay, sounds good. So you'll have more for us for the next meeting?
We'll...
Excellent, all right, thank you very much. All right, Michael, any news on the installation of the notice boards? Because you said you were going to sort of check in with Rich.
Rich and I, Rich came up this afternoon, drove around to locations. So we did find, obviously, the first one's going to be right up here. The second one is right at the intersection of Oakdale-Virtue Road and right by the Kid Kate Park. I want to say right across the street from Pickleball Court.
Okay.
And then also, we wanted to have one at the Stop 37 on the Lakeshore Drive side. Curious at that point, a couple hours ago, was, was Towne Michiana Shores or no else to do that. So we kind of utilized...
Wait a minute, Towne Michiana Shores?
Well, I'm sorry, Towne Michiana, Michi...
Well, no, it's supposed to be on the Indiana side, not Michigan side.
But it, just to make sure, like, well, we had, it's kind of shared, like the stop, the actual stop for the beach. Isn't that...
Oh, you're talking about putting it at the stop and not on that property that...
Yeah, we looked at that.
Uh huh.
It was okay, it's a backup plan, only because again, people driving on Lakeshore Drive, people are going to use Stop 37 as a, as a popular spot for the summertime and whatnot, walking down. So Rich had actually reached out to one of the contacts over there who was on the board, that's a neighbor of his. There's a town council meeting or a meeting this week, I'm going to type up a letter just to say, hey, is it possible for us to go ahead and put the posts there? Initial feedback was that there wasn't going to be an issue, but we're just finding out, worst comes to worst. Wherever they ax that option, we'll then revert back to the original one.
I really like that idea. You know, I had concerns about the other location.
Get us off the path or...
Yeah, people are going to drive by, and if it's at the staff, people will, you must know how to do this.
Right, especially for important information.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that's where we're at. I did contact, I don't know what's your name, Scobirdus?
Yes.
About a quote that Gene Paxton gave me as him as a reference, so I was going to hear back from him. Worst comes to worst, well, Rich and I will actually install it ourselves.
Okay.
But I figured, see what the price would be for it, just to save both backs.
Okay, great, thank you very much. All right, and we've had the report on lupine, so we're all set for that. Rich, I was going to ask you for whether, before Rusty passed, whether you had any chance to talk about the beach stop and any kind of repairs, any kind of things that, you know, we may have been doing over there at 37?
Well, I happened the other day to run into the same lady that's president, Joanne, I should get that back.
Yes, I know.
And she was actually sitting with the other elected member that's left on the first January. At our park, it was wrestling.
Oh, okay, as they were walking, uh huh.
And I asked Joanne what the status was of redoing, because they use Ottawa, you know, Blue Chip, not Blue Chip, Four Winds to do all those cement slabs and fancy stops everywhere up. And she told me that that was one of her goals, to get that done, it comes up in next spring. Then I was talking to Joan on the phone about, through Joe Kellman. Anyway, Joan was worried about something that, since we have the needed rights or something, I don't know. Again, Joan was talking, it was on speaker, but that was her chief president, so hopefully they will. But we may, if they don't do it in the next spring, we will have to work on the debt thing.
Okay.
That's my question.
Okay, and that is something that, you know, doesn't come from the town, concierge, or tax money that are collected, that comes from Booster Club. Correct, you know, yeah, so, to help, to help do that, because it's, you know, part of the entertainment.
And if they did do the cement slab on that, then we would actually get a real water fountain.
Ah, okay, all right.
Okay.
Okay.
If they're being honest.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much, okay. I have nothing under old business unless someone wants to add something. We would like to, you know, we haven't officially, you know, I guess there's no report really for the new attorney to give, but we would like to introduce our new attorney. And this is Brad Adamsky. And Brad, could you give us a little bit of information maybe, or a little about yourself, or the firm of Drayton, V G, Cerubal, and Elliott, correct?
Correct.
All right.
I'm Brad Adamsky, I'm a partner at Drayton, V G, Cerubal, and Elliott. I've been with those guys since 2015, but I've practiced in Fort County since 2003. I would be attending most of the meetings, but kind of be tackling the work along with Doug V G. Doug can't attend your meetings because he currently represents the town of West End, so he also needs to... Between the two of us, Doug's had a lot of experience representing the county council, he was also county commissioner, attorney for a two-year period. I represent the county drinking board, that's how I understand it, Stumbers. I represent the town of Kingsbury, and I think 10 townships right now as well, so we've got a lot to do in the background. We also work with, might have worked with various zoning boards from city Michigan City, city of Fort, Long Beach, on the petitioner side of things. So Doug represents the county B Z A, I represent Kingsbury B Z A, so we've also represented from the government side. We look forward to working with the board and working with the town and providing the best services we can for them.
Thank you very much, we look forward to having a good working relationship here.
Brad, what was your last name?
Adamsky.
Adamsky.
A D A M S K Y.
I figured.
Has it been pronounced any times, so, not a problem.
All right, thank you. So now, miscellaneous business. The status of the collections of those that are on compliance is a question that had been raised, you know, by someone. And I know that, you know, Doug basically gave a little bit of a report, you know, within her code enforcement with regards to that. So do you have anything else to add to that? You know, the, with regards to the collections now, has some of that been given over to the clerk treasurer?
Yeah, so the town has an ordinance on collections and they assign that task to the clerk treasurer. So if I put out a citation or anything like that, that includes buying, I send it up to the clerk treasurer.
Okay.
But I think it's new to her and I don't think she's, you know, fully geared up for it yet.
Uh huh, okay, all right. So then we will be speaking with Joan to find out how that's coming along for her. I guess that would be the best, you know, I guess, question. So, and then I think that as we go on, we'll have more questions, and which we will turn over, you know, to you to talk about as well. One of the points of business right now that I'd like to bring up is the setting of an executive session. There will be questions and things that we would like to talk to and, and that are more of a legal kind of nature, so we would like to call an executive session. And I would like to set up, if we could exchange some dates, and not necessarily today, but whatever, we can find out amongst the five of us, so that we could set a meeting. It could be remote, it could be together, whatever works out, okay?
I prefer to sit together, because we know, get to know each other a little bit better.
That's a good thought.
To record, exchange, turn over the documents that we need to give, that would be easier for us.
Okay, excellent, okay.
And I would vote for sooner than later, because we've been at expense for a while, and some things we didn't.
All right. Well, I guess that probably the hardest ones to give in would be Mr. Adamsky and Michael, because of work responsibilities.
Oh, yeah, we can work that.
Yeah, I'm sure we can work with that, so.
Tomorrow.
Okay, all right, so we'll get that going then, you know, in the very near future, thank you. Okay, the only thing I didn't add before, but I would add now, is that I think we, it would be valuable for us to put out another newsletter. We did a spring one, to do another one that's still summer. And this one to address some more of the, you know, simple things about, you know, the courtesy on the road, the golf carts, reminders about fireworks, maybe. I know it's nice to do newsletters that are happy and smiley, but, you know, we have to give off some of these other, you know, requirements. And then, and as well include things, I know the chief, you know, I say chief, the old chief, okay, the past chief, okay, former chief and road commissioner. He was doing some trimming out on the roads. And, and again, you know, now in the summertime is when you see where the roads are really overgrown or corners. And, and one of the thoughts is reaching out to the residents, that they should trim their own things unless, like, I think someone put in, they get a haircut that they don't like. You know, and I have had complaints, you know, however.
That's a fairly big one for the industry.
I know, I know. And, yes, and we do mention in the newsletters all the time about please trim back, especially those on the corners. So I think a newsletter that goes out to everybody to include some of these things, but I'm even thinking of sending a letter, you know, literally, I would canvas the town, take a look at the corners, and then contacting each one of those homeowners personally, to say, besides the newsletter, I want you to know that you should clear, what is it, is it 13-foot at the angle or 15? Chief Swistick, do you know, or Bob, what is that line of sight on the corner? Is it 13 feet in? What is that, there's something about that, I can't remember exactly. Seven or eight feet high to be able to see around, so you can see when you come around a corner.
Yeah, I don't know the, the actual measurement itself, I mean, I just, my road office, we go out in Long Beach, where we do to inspect intersections. We do the same thing, we work with the residents, ask them first to trim them back. They refuse, it's on the right away, then we come and we trim back the right away. Our right away is 15 feet off of the shoulder of the roadway, so it's probably about 15 feet.
Yeah, ours is, yeah, between 10 and 15, I think, depends on how wide the roads are, so. Okay, all right, well, so anyway, those are my thoughts about a newsletter and then contacting people, you know, regarding corners. All right, under communications received, we received letters in number, quite a few letters regarding 415 Pinewood. We received letters regarding 501 L Portal. We also received a letter from I D M regarding the fact that Michiana Shores has now been designated and asked for, you know, I guess, place, that we've given this designation, that it has to do with stormwater drainage. And we are very small and we don't necessarily need to have that. So I will be, I'm working with them now to see about having this designation removed from us, because it would be an additional thing and a charge for us if we can just be incorporated under, you know, in a county thing instead of us individually. That probably would be best for us. So anyway, but I'm, I'm speaking with them about that now. We have a year, I think, until next year, July, to file, whether we want this or not. Then again, we received a letter from Peter Cummins, in which he was addressing something about fences, but I did not get a response back from him when I required about his questions, because they were not clear. And then there was a letter that the town received regarding the Ford, the town's Ford pickup truck. But, you know, Bob knows about that already and Joan responded. But these are communications that we received, so.
Recall.
Yeah. Okay, and that's about it. So now, any more public com, oh, yes, chief?
We'd like everybody to check the website for the low road closures coming up.
Oh, that's right, okay, yes. Because of the picnic, we'll put that, that's up on the website, I think, right?
Those are the letter in the mail box, it's today, or...
I can't remember better.
Yeah, okay, good. So anyway, everybody who's around those areas, wherever the roads are going to be closed, are getting letters, so that they would know that, you know, that the road will be closed and they can plan accordingly. But for the public, you know, because of the picnic, which will take place Saturday, July 16th, I believe?
This Saturday?
This Saturday, yes. And between the hours of basically 10 and 1:00 or 2:00, I don't remember, is it 2:00?
Closing until 4:00.
Oh, they're closing it until 4:00? Okay, for cleanup and all this kind of stuff, for the picnic that takes place, to make sure that there's no traffic. Driving up and down those areas around the park, so it'd be safe, because there, you know, be a lot of people out there, children, bikes, you know, and so forth, so. Just so that everybody would know, thank you for asking me to say that. Public comment? Please, Samantha first, and then I'll...
When you guys are working on the ordinance for the fireworks, the noise against noise ordinance, Michiana includes dates for New Year's Eve and Labor Day, so I would suggest that we consider adding those dates to ours as well.
Oh, you mean Michiana, Michigan does?
Michigan, Michigan.
Oh, okay, they do Labor Day. We do have, New Year's Eve is included on ours.
It's not in the ordinance yet, so I'll have to check that.
Okay, if, I, that's where I read it, in the ordinance, but we'll check again then, okay. And, and then what is it, but that's a good suggestion, we can take a look at that. You know, you'll be, who's working, you're working on the noises, right? Ralph, okay, so, okay, that's for you to know. Any more, Sharon, you have something to say?
I just wanted to bring up short-term rental problems.
Okay.
I'm sorry to bring it up, but the house next door to me, 10, Palhe and Dry, it's an extremely large house, and they abuse it. I mean, they get people coming in all the time, there's cars parked all over, there's noise all over. I don't feel like I need to view the police, you know, and I'm also afraid of calling the police, because I don't want any retrovision. So I guess what would ask me is, if, you know, it's after midnight and it's party city, more than 10 people, party city, do I call that show's number? Should I be calling the police, which I think you probably will tell me, what's... We have to do something, because the houses are so big, these people are getting that 10 people is nothing.
Okay.
With two cars and five people each, and as a full-time resident, and I love the area, something has to be looked at. I mean, do the police patrol the area and if they see all this noise, do they do something about it? I mean, I'm just kind of, I'm trying to get some...
That's, that's good. And in general, I wouldn't answer a question and other things, but this is a very important question. You heard earlier, you even heard Chief Swistick say that, that police, instead of calling various other people and extending this time of frame of trying to find somebody, you know, unless you know the owner, or if you've got a number for the owners, maybe making a phone call to the owner and saying, look, it's taking place again. And whether they like it or not, I mean, it is a fact, they need to know that there's a lot of noise taking place, or that there are way too many people and stuff. But you're, I think the best bet at any case is always to call the police, to let them know. Chief, should they use the non-emergency number for that kind of a call?
That's correct, the 8744243, or you can call 8796700. That's the non-emergency number into the dispatch center at the E 911 Center. And you are correct, we would ask that residents, particular neighbors, contact us, because we have what's called a computer-aided, computer-aided dispatch system, a CAD. So what that does is every call we get is logged, we can then pull up calls for service, a history of how many times we've been there in the last month, six months, a year. If we do not get calls from residents and do not have those logged in the system, we don't have the history to use, to provide to Dev, yourself. So it's very important that residents do call us, and allows the opportunity to come out and investigate the cause of this danger. Also, it assists us as law enforcement officers, because we work off of probable cause, reasonable suspicion, and we need input from the community to allow us to do our duties well. We can't just randomly start picking on certain homes, and that or less, obviously, it is way out of line. We hear 243, and then 87... out of line, if we hear 243, and then 8796700 is the 1911 Center.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, yeah. And that, what Chief just said, I remember when we lived in Chicago, and the police, you know, would come to neighborhood kind of meetings and whatever, and they always said, the more often you call, the more often we can even patrol and send a car down your street, because we know that there may be problems. But if we don't know, you know, we think everything is fine. So anyway, so that's always the best idea, I think. And I think you had another, you had comment too, but please identify yourself and your address.
My name is Teresa Niskin, I'm at 19 Howaton, I'm the resident. I just have a question. I was at a BZA meeting on June 23rd for the application for short-term rental at 14 Howaton, and I sort of assumed that this meeting would be where that would be addressed.
No, no, no.
So, does that mean I need to come to the next?
Yes, because we're not discussing them today, no.
Okay, so I should, I should be at the next meeting for the discussion on that property?
Yeah, that's, if it's on the agenda, and they submit everything in time, because they're just gonna be wasting our time and their time to have...
I was hoping if they didn't move forward, they're...
Yeah, we only look at the things that were supplied to us via the agenda and documentation, so we can kind of do what you saw here.
All right.
If they don't submit it, we have nothing to discuss.
Okay, all right. All right, any other comments? Yes, go ahead.
Jeffrey Field, 3723, do you have a destination as to when you guys might pursue an ordinance or a thing on the short-term rentals?
Well, you know, as you heard today, we can't stop them, okay? But pursuing anything that might, in some way, help us to maybe control, you know, is something that we do want to work on. I can't give you any kind of a timeline, and because we are limited by laws to what, you know, exactly can be done, so I can't make you any kind of promises, sorry. Okay? Council patents?
I've got nothing.
All right, well, nothing else, and I...
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
Mitch told me about a tree, Bob, do you know that tree that's leaning?
I love that today. Huh? It's not that bad today.
And these dates on the next Michiana meeting, that date was due then?
Yeah, well, that's, I sent out another agenda, but Joan obviously had loved the office. So, because the second agenda has everything correct. Next Plan Commission meeting, August 2nd, Town Council meeting, August 9th, the BZA will be August 25th, Park Board meeting, oops, I didn't change Park Board meeting, it's supposed to be July 25th, because that has not happened yet.
What was the BZA?
BZA will be August 25th, at 6:30 PM. All right, so, there are, one more comment?
Is it too late to ask you, I don't know if this is like, you know, short-term rental situation, you know, how people get, own the house sometimes?
Okay.
Are in the house, and they're going wild, and then there's people they bring in rent. On your short-term rental agreement with you, can they state the homeowner's license plate?
Can they what?
Put on their form when they apply, with their license plate number card?
We've never discussed that, and I don't know if we can or not, but that's something.
It's not on the application.
It's not on the application right now, so.
Then you cut down.
Interesting question, okay?
There's a problem.
Interesting question, maybe something to think about, okay? All right, thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, then I am going to call for motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All right, Michael Martinez says move that we adjourn. Thank you very much. It is 9, looks like about 48, I mean, 8:48, what am I saying? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.